Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Plan Commission meeting for August 16th, 2016. We have six members of the commission present at the moment. I believe Commissioner Pack will be joining us here shortly. I'm going to rearrange our agenda just a little bit and move our public hearings up to first and then we'll take care of our business item last. We do have one item on our consent calendar as well, which is the minutes from our August 2nd meeting. Commissioner Scotty?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Scotty, second by Commissioner Green. Discussion to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. So our first public hearing is the Papapita Expansion, 6250 West Danan Way, preliminary and final subdivision plan, and a preliminary and final site plan. Papapita Farzad Mahedi is the applicant, is the applicant present. We'll hold it off on that and I guess we'll start with staff.
Okay, the proposal is for a first stage preliminary site plan for the Papapita Expansion on 6250 West Danan Way. And the second review is for preliminary major subdivision. It's a one lot major subdivision. The application is for the zoning district in a M1 zoning district, light manufacturing, with an acreage of approximately five acres. Specifically, the proposal is for the planning commission to determine on the preliminary site plan whether the loading bay doors facing Newbingham Highway and Prosperity Road are sufficiently screened from the street to warrant approval. The applicant has proposed landscaping on the north and the northeast side, which includes evergreen trees and a three-foot berm. The evergreen trees will be a Norway spruce evergreen and it's a medium-speed growing evergreen trees that we've used in the past to screen loading bay doors that face the street. The proposal also shows a six-foot, well, it actually would be a seven-foot high fence along Newbingham and Prosperity. It's a wrought iron fence. The fence, in staff opinion, isn't sufficient enough to screen the loading bay doors on the two loading bay doors that face the street, but the landscaping, in staff's opinion, should be sufficient to screen those loading bay doors. Staff has found through our staff report that the preliminary site plan and the preliminary major subdivision meet all of the findings of fact required in the city code, and we are recommending that planning commission approve the preliminary site plan and the preliminary major subdivision with the five conditions listed in the staff report for the site plan, with the fifth, with the fifth condition amended to read, a three-foot high landscaping berm and Norway spruce evergreen trees are required to be installed along Newbingham Highway to screen the single loading bay door facing Newbingham Highway. And staff is also recommending that planning commission approve the preliminary major subdivision with the three conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Are we anticipating the applicant attending this evening?
He didn't say that he was going to be here.
Oh.
Andrew.
Very well, we'll turn it over to you then if you had anything you wanted to add to the staff report or...
Nope, I don't have anything to add. You did great, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you give us your name?
Yep, Andrew Pochweiler with A.D. Urbia, Arkansas.
Thank you. Any questions for the show? Doesn't look like it. Thank you. This is the first two of our public hearings this evening, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for that. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item, I would invite you up to the podium. You give your name and contact information and you have three minutes to make your comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring back the commission. Commissioner Green?
I just have one question. So the property that bounds Newbingham Highway, it'll be landscaped, but a sidewalk's not required there?
Along Newbingham Highway?
No, sidewalk's not required. The city's in the process of installing a sidewalk in that same location with a grant that we got for a safe route to school, that grant, so we should probably have that sidewalk in before the buildings open.
So the city's putting the sidewalk in there?
That's correct.
Okay. That's good for the developers.
Okay, no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Here, I'll go for it.
Commissioner Green?
We'll start with, I guess the first one we do is the preliminary site plan. I want to make sure I'm on the right page. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, information received during this meeting, I move that the planning commission approve the Papapita Expansion preliminary site plan for the property located at 6250 West Danan Way in an M1 zoning with the conditions one through five, with condition five is amended.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Scotty. Discussion to that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. With one abstention.
Yes, thank you.
There we go. Commissioner Pack asking the abstention. Excellent. So then our next public hearing is...
Nope, we still have another motion on that.
Oh, that's right, sorry, you got the subdivision.
And I'll just keep on going then. Based on the positive findings set forth in the staff report and the information received during this meeting, I move that the planning commission approve the Prosperity subdivision plot A for the property located at 6250 West Danan Way, located in an M1 zoning with conditions one through three is listed in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Scotty. Discussion to that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries...
And to clarify, I have studied, and so I would be in favor of that on both of them, since I arrived in the middle of that first motion, I didn't know if it would be appropriate to vote in the affirmative, but I'm fine with both of those. I just wasn't here for the discussion.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Now that brings us on to our next public hearing, which is the Diskus Major Subdivision, northeast corner of Old Bingham Highway and Bacchus Highway, considering a preliminary subdivision plat, one lot on almost 240 acres. Solmas Travis Perry is the applicant, applicant address. Time over you, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Travis Perry from Solmas, address 4179 Riverboat Road in Salt Lake City. Before I begin, I just want to express my thanks to the planning commission for your service. I am a resident of your fair city and I do appreciate your many hours of service to us, so thank you very much. I am the applicant and civil engineer for this project. Scott has done a wonderful job of summarizing the subdivision request, preliminary subdivision plat request in front of you, so I won't take up too much of your time. As you noted, it is 240 acres, currently two lots, and we'll be subdividing it into one lot. The application shows that the project will be bounded by public streets on basically all four sides. Currently, it is bounded by the existing U-111 or Bacchus Highway, as it's known in our location, and on the west, Old Bingham Highway on the south. Both of those roads will receive some improvements as a result of this project, and then we will be constructing what's currently known as 98 South on the north side of our project, and additionally 6500 West, or whatever it ends up being named, will be built adjacent to the project on the east side. We have reviewed all of staff's comments and have no concerns with any of their comments or their recommendations. Would note that the easements that are requested are in progress with our obtainment, some of them, and are in the process of obtaining the other easements that are required for the project. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? At the sound market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn it over to our site planner.
Okay, thank you. I'll be pretty brief in my summary today. This is definitely a unique subdivision. Typically, we don't see, seem a lot subdivisions occupying as much acreage, but I put the overlay on this aerial photo to kind of give you some scale instead of just showing you a picture of the plat. As the applicant's indicated, there will be a new collector road, 98 South, the name might change slightly, but along the north boundary. And per code, they will be installing that because it's a subdivision-bound road. They're also going to be improving the roadway, Old, they will be improving Old Bingham Highway adjacent to the project as well. And separate from, but kind of connected to, the subdivision request is this future road that will curve down to Old Bingham Highway, provide kind of a looped connective road In addition to, you know, it's kind of hard to discern what you're seeing here as far as yellow lines on this aerial, but again, these are the main roads. These are utility lines that we've seen placed here, just a looped water system. Really, that's immaterial at this point, not until we review the details of the site plan for specific use, does that really come into play and does that really matter. They're just shown here as part of the overlay that I threw on. Typically, the planning commission does not see industrial subdivisions or lot, or I'm sorry, single lot subdivisions. This is kicked into the major category because of the roadway dedication associated with the plat. And so as the applicant's indicated, there's just two large parcels right now, and those parcels will be combined into a single lot with this application. We've gone through all the required findings of fact associated with subdivisions, and we believe that it does meet all of the criteria needed for this subdivision, and we are requesting that the planning commission approve the preliminary plat subject to the conditions listed on page four and five of your staff report. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. The only question I had in reading through the staff packet is, in the future, do we perceive that 98 South, or whatever the future name of that road is, would continue? I mean, we can't really continue it this way because we'd run into buildings, but how far out would that go to intersect with Newbingham Highway, just because it mentions that sidewalks might be necessitated adjacent to Lot 1 on the other side of the street? But would there be a time when, if we have this developed and there's no sidewalk on the opposite end, even though right now it wouldn't generate pedestrian traffic, would there be any need for that in the future foreseeable as we continue building farther out the other way?
So this is approximately 9800 South. So 9800 South, so your question is, would it extend in the future to the west?
Yes, thank you.
That's a great question for a traffic engineer. I know that, I mentioned in the staff report that the applicant needs to file a separate application for a transportation master plan update, amendment to that master plan, and I'm sure that our engineers will look at that, but...
We don't know what the future will bring, but as far as the potential for sidewalk on 9800 South, we, the applicant is dedicating the land necessary that sidewalk could be built in the future, so we're not shrinking the right of way at all, we're just foregoing the need for the sidewalk for now.
Great, thank you. That's what I meant to inquire. Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
So I guess I'm not familiar with the transportation master plan, but what's got to be amended in the transportation master plan to make this work?
So let me go back a couple slides. The transportation master plan is an element of our general plan, comprehensive general plan, and I guess the slide doesn't show it too well, but there is, the current alignment for Wells Park Road on the transportation plan, I believe, comes down and follows this general alignment, and it doesn't really contemplate a collector road necessarily coming down south. So it's just addressing a shift, a slight realignment of those arterial and collector roads, essentially is what the transportation master plan refers to.
And the road that's going to be 60-whatever, 100 West, that's going to curve around to the north side of the property, that'll go in when the other piece of property to the east is developed?
Not necessarily. That's part of the development agreement that is connected to the site plan, so the specific user, that's currently being discussed right now. You're referring to this section of road?
Right.
Yes, that may come in all at once, but that's still being negotiated at this point.
Commissioner Scotty?
Thank you. So with the master plan, Wells Park Road, I'm assuming will eventually still come down and connect to 9800 South or no?
Yes, it will. It will.
Okay, cool, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Very good. This is also agenda's public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak on this particular item, time is now yours. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring back the commission. Commissioner Scotty?
Well, I'd like to make a motion. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary subdivision plat for the Diskus subdivision located at approximately Old Bingham Highway and U-111, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Scotty, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight, business item. This is reviewing an item that we tabled at a July meeting. Reviewing a future land use map amendment for 138.5 acres, low density residential, high density residential, mixed use and commercial, to low density residential, high density residential, and commercial, and then a rezone along those same lines there. Turn it over to our applicant.
My name is Mike Kelly, land planner. Glad to be here again. Always a pleasure. Since our last meeting, we've made some changes to our plan, and we are now requesting the general plan amendment, a low density and medium density designations, where before we were requesting low and high density. We've modified the concept plan and reduced the total number of lots. We've reduced the number of 5,000, 6,000 square foot lots, and we have increased the number of 8,000 to 10,000 square foot lots. We were asked at the last planning commission meeting that we intended to address several issues. First, you asked for more variety of lot sizes, that we completed the conceptual plan. We provide open space acreages and document those, particularly as it relates to the commercial site that we didn't have much detail on. And to provide scenarios on how the densities would be affected if a school or a church were included in the development, and showing how the commercial properties integrated into the neighborhood and a phasing in timeframes. We received several criticisms of our plan in that last meeting and would like to address some of these. The first one was that there are 333 total lots in the high-density area and 119 in the low-density area. That ratio is almost two to one. The code requires a mix, but it wasn't the opinion that it met the overall intent of the requirement. We think this is precisely what the general plan specifies because the low density is designated as one to three units per acre. The medium density is set at 3.1 to 5 units per acre. That gives us a ratio in housing densities between 1.6 to 1 and 3 to 1. Our current plan that you are reviewing tonight has 320 units in the medium density and 115 units in the low density. That means that our ratio of medium to low is 2.78 to 1. That falls right within the expected range of densities for those two. This is probably on the higher end of those ratios, but if we went to the high density that we were originally requesting, we don't even come into those range of densities, density ratios. Criticism number two, criteria two has not been met because of the excessive numbers of 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots, and these are not compatible with the surrounding The Maples to the east of us and the Sycamores to the south of us, you can see on your general plan, and I think just graphically, you can see that there are smaller lots in those adjacent properties than are in our proposal. The Sycamores to the south has been developed at a density of about 3.7 units per acre. We're proposing 3.5. From the maps that are available, it appears that the Sycamores contains 226 lots of sizes comparable to our smallest lots. We have 99 of those smaller lots. The Maples to the east has been developed at a density of approximately 5.3 units per acre, and there are 257 lots which appear to be about 4,000 to 5,000 square feet. And then there are some smaller lots that are about 5,000 to 6,000 square feet, no, that are as small as 2,000 square feet, and there are 225 of those lots. Again, we have 99 lots that are 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. We think we have, our smallest lots are larger than the adjacent properties, and we don't have nearly as many of those lots. We have fewer than 100 when they exceed 200 and 400 lots of those smaller sizes. The next criticism, the number of 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots needed to be reduced and to add more 78,000 square foot size. Our plan that we presented last time contained 135, 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots, and we have reduced that to 99. Originally, that plan contained 14 lots in the 8,000 to 10,000 square foot range, and we have added 31 lots to that number. So overall, we've reduced 17 lots in our total numbers, but we picked up some sizes. Next criticism, those kinds of lots have short driveways, so the sidewalks are blocked to pedestrians. Your ordinance says that the front setback is a minimum of 20 feet, and that the garage must sit five feet behind the front of the house. So that gives us a total setback of 25 feet. That's one of our houses on our smallest lot, and with that 25-foot setback, we put on there the biggest truck we could find, and I think we've got plenty of space to park a truck in that 25-foot driveway. So this is a comparison of our two concepts and how we have adjusted the variety of lot sizes. We have, again, increased the number of 8,000 to 10,000 square foot lots significantly, and we've reduced the 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots. And this is new to the concept plan. We were asked to address the church or school site. We've included a church site that is 3.28 acres. We have added some detail to the commercial site, showing how that could be developed. This is one possibility, and we have the required parking shown for the square footage of buildings that are provided. We have the required open space, and we exceed that mostly because of the topography at the back of that site. And then you can see in the low-density area, right in this area, we've increased the size of those lots significantly, and that's where we've reduced the number of 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots. Then we go to the completed conceptual plan, and the criticism was that we didn't see the six points of the development plan being met. I think this is referring to Section 135C2, and there are six submittal requirements for a concept development plan. First is the requirement for a legal description, and it is there and is complete. Number two is a topographic map with two-foot contour intervals, and that is included. Number three is that we show locations of parks, open spaces, playgrounds, and other public or private recreation on the plan, and the concept plan does show those things now, along with the extension of New Sycamore Road as a collector street through our property as requested by the city, an emergency access from U-111, and the roundabout that is shown down on 7800 South and New Sycamore Road. Number four of those items is the general location of all dwellings and institutional commercial structures shown. The general locations of the residential dwellings is indicated on the site plans that are in the submission. The general location of the church is shown, we have included that, and shows the necessary parking around that building. And then for the commercial site, we have shown one possible layout of that site accommodating all the requirements there. Continuing with the conceptual plan, the next item in that number four is the proposed population densities, and those are determined based upon the 2010 projected household sizes provided in your general plan. Using our 435-unit count and the household size of 3.46 persons per household, we project the population of our project of 1,505 residents. If we were to jump to the 2020 projection estimates, that population would be about The building densities are given, 4.6 in our medium density, low density is 1.9, our overall density is 3.5 units per acre. And we have 83% residential single-family lots and 17% residential compound units. Number five, a preliminary development schedule indicating the phases, and that phasing plan is included. We've included a phasing plan summary, and we anticipate that the commercial development, which is the last phase shown on our phasing plan, would be completed about 2026. And this is the phasing plan showing those 16 phases of the commercial coming at the And we show number of lots we anticipate to develop in each of those phases. And we show number of lots we anticipate to develop, um, in each of those phases. Number six, a draft of the Declaration of Covenants that is, has been provided in your plans as well. Next criticism under completed conceptual plan, we've gone to great lengths to show their, um, show our home designs, but none of them meets with the requirement of the setback of the front facade, um, or the garage. That states that the garage must be five feet behind. Our plants, plans are in some cases deficient, but that's a minor adjustment to make those plans work. And on the right, we show how that porch can be extended to make that five foot requirement. And so not all of our plans reflect that adjustment, but it's an easy one that's, that's made as we wrap, um, closer to our, our, uh, preliminary plat approvals. Then our open space acreages are documented this way. We have some in parks, some in open spaces around the townhomes, um, some in, in, uh, common areas like this one behind some of the lots along seventy-eight hundred south, some of the commercial area. And, uh, I think we've identified all of those, uh, open spaces and parks now. There's the acreage breach of them, the, the deduction of the thirty percent plus slopes and the net acreages that, that accommodate the fifty percent open space requirement. We've included the three point two eight acre church site in the concept plan. This has reduced the number of lots in the low density portion of our project by four and then with the, all of the changes that we have made in the total lot count adjustment, our townhome have reduced from seventy-seven to seventy-four and that maintains our eighty-three seventeen, uh, ratio that's required. Then we were asked to show how the commercial is integrated into the neighborhood. This commercial property is easily accessed by all of the trail systems that, that we've shown in, in the, uh, concept plan and also a connection to the east, um, which is a master plan trail to be on one side or other of U one eleven and, uh, we would have connection to that as well. Again, it's, it's anticipated by us that that commercial development would come along about twenty-twenty-six and would be the last of the phases. So that is our new concept plan and, um, our responses to the questions that you had. Is there any other questions that we can address for you?
Thank you. It looks like we might have a few. Commissioner Green.
Let's go back to the open space map. Um, now I gotta turn this on. I turned it off, sorry. So, so there, there's a disconnect here and I'm trying to figure out which one's right. Open space one shows three point zero eight acres, zero point six net. Yet on the table on the next page, it shows that the net is, or that the thirty percent slope is point six seven. Which one's accurate?
This table is more accurate. I apologize for that mistake.
Then down the, you have to go back to the map on open spaces. Seven, nine and eleven, or no, seven, nine and ten, sorry. Seven, nine and ten. What is the point four acres of open space around those townhouses, if you will? That looks like townhouses to me or some sort of-
It's, it's the corridor that goes down through those townhomes and carries that trail system that is part of our overall system.
And, and so tho- those townhomes that, if it goes down the middle, none of that, I'm assuming that that space, well, there's gotta be a setback on the side, right? So, so how much of that, where's, where's, where's the property line end on those and where does the open space start? That would be my question. It looks like we're just trying to count open space, that's some space that runs down between the middle of them that'd be a setback.
Yeah, it, the property line is probably, um, five feet in front of that front wall of the townhome unit.
Okay.
And we would count the open space beyond that property line.
Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A question on, you've addressed the residential and commercial, um, but looking through the, the minutes, you know, four lengthy paragraphs on, uh, mixed use. Could you address the mixed use? I mean, you went through all of these criticisms. Thank you for doing that. Uh, my, my big question was, um, according to the general plan and resident input, the, on your first plan, mixed use was going to be completely eliminated.
Hmm.
And so thank you for addressing all of these criticisms that you mentioned, but I didn't see one on mixed use. Would you be able to speak toward that?
Well, the mixed use element that is in the general plan is gone from our proposal now and we have a mixed use project because we have different types of, of residential housing and we have a commercial component that is included as part of the project.
Right. So when you're speaking on commercial, you're basically differentiating, you've got a residential component and a commercial component-
Absolutely.
Side by side.
Correct.
Whereas mixed use would be basically both components meshed together in the same area.
But the mixed use that you're talking about does not comply with, with the new cap and grade ordinance. There's no way we could accommodate that.
Sure. I just wanted to understand exactly where you're addressing mixed use.
Yep, that mixed use is gone. The mixed use is in our housing types and the commercial element.
Thank you.
If I could add some clarification, Commissioner Pack regarding mixed use, just the, kind of the associated, uh, tangent. Um, mixed use in our general plan, um, and in the WSPA doesn't necessarily require, uh, vertical mixed use where you have a ground floor retail and you, you have, or developers do have the option, they have that designation to, to do something similar to this where they do all apartments and then next door, uh, standalone commercial. They, they do have that option and, um, we've yet to see that vertical integration. I think the closest thing we've got going right now would be the Jordan Valley TOD, um, in, in that PC zone, but, um, for what it's worth, I just wanted to clarify that not necessarily a vertical mixed use, it could be a horizontal mixture of uses, so.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Kowski.
Thank you. Um, first I just want to compliment you on the, the, uh, awesome amount of information that you've compiled for us. I know sometimes it can be hard to, you know, keep coming back to us, but, um, I appreciate that. It makes it, it makes it good for us to be able to see what your intent is and-
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, good work. So, um, my, my question is, um, in phases one and two, uh, I see in phase one, it looks like it's the four unit townhome and in phase two, it looks like, uh, the duplex.
The phasing plan. Right there. In phase one, again, I'm sorry.
So in phase one, it looks like you have the, the, uh, fourplex, uh, townhomes. Is, is that going to be the Santa Cruz two and the, um, city line three elevations?
I, I can't tell you for sure. We have three alternative elevations for that product and, that we have shown you.
Okay.
And, and so we showed alternatives. That decision is still to be made which of those elevations we will use.
Gotcha. Okay.
And, and it could be that, that we would like to use some of the more contemporary in some locations, the more traditional design in other locations within the project so that all of our townhomes are not the same.
Okay. I understand. I'm, I'm glad that that's a consideration.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
On the elevations for those that are in, that are the, the townhome type properties and the designs, it shows, sorry. It shows, it shows, um, some of the, the townhomes, uh, as three stories high. How tall, are, are they gonna meet the thirty-five foot requirement for the development?
They do. They do. The tallest are about thirty-two feet.
Any other questions for the applicant? All I can, what Commissioner Kowski said, I appreciate the effort you put into really addressing every one of the concerns that we had at our last meeting.
Thank you.
So it, it goes a long way that you took that into consideration and spent the time on that, so thanks. Uh, Mr. McAnlis?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, one of the, the things on your, on your agenda is that it's listed as high density residential, but it's actually, uh, for the change of the land use map. I just wanted to say that was a typo on my part that should have been to medium density. Um, and then, uh, we really don't have anything to add to the, the presentation. I think the applicant's covered what we were gonna go over, uh, anyway. Uh, just as a, a side note, just keep in mind that this is a concept plan, uh, that, uh, this will be brought back before the design review committee. It will also be brought back to the, the planning commission at a later date for preliminary review on each of these, these phases and on, and on the overall project, so.
Thank you. Any questions first? Yeah. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Um, being this is a concept plan and we're showing ninety-nine, five to six thousand square foot lots, can that change?
The overall density is, is formally set through the preliminary, at the preliminary stage before the council, so.
So they cannot add any additional lots that size, even though this is just a concept development?
Well, I think, uh, the important thing to keep in mind is that the ratio needs to be met, so there may be some, we're going, going on that, that way. Um, it's ultimately the council's decisions whether or not, are there more units, that or, or not, so.
Thank you. I do have a concern, yeah. I have been against five thousand square foot lots, which, and I do want to congratulate you. You worked really hard on this. We've sent you back twice and, you know, that, that's hard to do. Um, one of my concerns is all just empties on the seventy-eight hundred south. We're looking at four hundred and thirty-five residential homes that empties on seventy-eight hundred south, which is right now a really busy, busy road. And, um, so that, that is one of my concerns. That isn't something you can take care of, but it is a concern for the residents of the city. Um, and then again, um, you talk about neighboring communities with smaller lots than five thousand, they're no longer allowed, so five thousand is the smallest lot we just allow to live in the city. Um, so that is my one concern, but I do, I do think you've done a great job in answering all of our concerns and our questions. I just have those two concerns around, um, a lot of business traffic on seventy-eight hundred south. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So we already have the public hearing on this, so we're really just a discussion, question, answer. You did that at the last meeting.
So I'm, I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out in this entire packet, I, I know it was up on the screen, but I don't see the timelines for the development plan. Did I miss something in the packet?
Could you, could you clarify timelines?
Well, the, the, the code specifically requires, um, a preliminary development schedule including the phases which in the development will occur and the approximate dates when the said phases will be completed. I don't see anything that shows the approximate dates that the said phases will be completed. And so that would, that would lead to my question is that if it, if it's not part of the packet and it doesn't meet the requirement of the code because those phases aren't listed, can we even consider the packet or what are the legal implications if we approve it? When it doesn't meet the requirement of the code?
So Ray's looking through the packet right now, but, um, we, on a project of this size, it's, it's very challenging to nail down any timeframe. Um, they had a date on their presentation that showed an approximate completion of phase sixteen, what, twenty-twenty-six or something like that?
Ten year.
Yeah, ten year, ten year, um, span. In previous, uh, planned communities that we've reviewed and approved, um, we, we get an approximate start date and a, a guestimate as to the completion of the project, so.
But if we're supposed to have phases and the ordinance says we're supposed to have phases and approximate completions and it's not there, then we can't hold their feet to the fire. And I, and I guess my, I guess my problem with this is, is that, and, and I may sound, I may sound critical, but as we, as we deal with this and we, we've heard the city council the last couple of weeks talk about the rule of law and all the other stuff that goes into following the ordinance and following the statute, if we, if we give here and say, well, you don't have to have that in your application, let's send it to the city council. If we say, well, it's okay to do this, but, and, and we fudge on the ordinance, then it's not gonna be long before they say, well, you know, fifteen point one acres is, you know, that's, that's really burdensome. We want fifteen, we want fourteen point one on the open space and we want more density and, and we, we've seen, we've seen that slippery slope with the, with the TOD, with the TOD stuff and everything else that I just wonder where we're, you know, at what point do we draw the, the, the compliance with the code and what legal implications do we have when the applicant doesn't apply, doesn't, doesn't comply with the code? Maybe we see something up on the screen that says, well, it'll be phase sixteen, twenty-twenty-six. And I'll give you a perfect example. The applicant said that could be, he talked about the commercial site, phase sixteen, and he said that could be developed and it says one possible layout. Homes Homes, this is my opinion, he may not like it, Homes Homes has no, no plan on working on that commercial site, um, in phase sixteen. If they're coming before the commission and wanting a PC zone, the, the commercial's gotta be integrated and it's gotta be their responsibility, but they're, they're throwing up homes and some other things and really not integrating the commercial and just saying, well, it might happen if it doesn't. And that's my concern is that we get to phase sixteen and they're gonna say, well, you know what, we're home builders and we haven't found any other biddy to develop at C of I and we're stuck with a piece of property on the corner now that nobody else wants to develop, they committed to when we zoned this. That's, that's, that's where I'm headed with that. If you can see my point.
Yeah, if you need some additional clar- clarification from the applicant as far as phasing goes, uh, again, uh, we, we do have, uh, other ordinances to talk about expiration of plaits and those types of things and, uh, certainly if they expire, they're right back to the commission again and, um, it, because the, the, the law, the rule body talking about has, has, uh, in my estimation, some, some ambiguity. I mean, how, how do you lock them down? There's, there's no, you can't lock them down and say, well, you didn't complete it.
I don't expect that, that you say, hey, phase, phase three's gonna be completed on April four, two thousand and nineteen. But, you know, you know, sometimes, you know, phase one will be developed between two thousand and se- sixteen and eighteen or some timeframes. I think that's what the ordinance calls for and we don't have anything there and, you know, is, is that, and I'm, I don't know why that's in the ordinance and, you know, uh, you know, what, what's it there for, to hold their feet to the fire? I, I, I actually think it's there because one of the other provisions of the code says the city can require a bond for the developer to, to ensure that they do certain things. And I think that that's part, that's probably part of the, part of the phase plan is for the city council to decide if they wanna, wanna impose a bond or something else like that. I don't know, but, you know, that's, that's where I'm going with this.
Exactly. I think you're, you're heading in the right direction. When you're dealing with a large master plan community, you have to phase the infrastructure appropriately and this is a concept plan and so this is a good opportunity for the applicant, the ma- And so this is a good opportunity for the applicant, no matter the project, to, to step up and say, okay, this is, this is kind of what we're thinking. And as we move to the next round of approvals and review, which is the preliminary development plan and preliminary plats and those types of things, those are often associated with development agreements, which talk about bonding and, you know, the, the infrastructure. And so, um, as we've dealt with this, uh, issue in the past, the, we've, we've simply gotten a, a general estimate from the applicant so that we can move forward with the, the development plans and, uh, and have a good idea of what to bake into these development agreements and, and bond agreements. So I think Commissioner Green, it's a good opportunity for the applicant to go on record again and clarify, uh, on, on record, what their idea is so we can, uh, have a heads up moving forward.
We have made that commitment in the document under reason and justification on page seventeen of twenty. That twenty-twenty-six date is stated there as our anticipation for the completion of phase sixteen. And the commercial is figured to be the last phase of development simply because, as we talked with commercial developers, the need is there for the rooftops before they can make a commercial product viable there. And when we were looking at the possibility of, of many more homes in there with some higher densities, that schedule was accelerated, but we are not providing in our development enough homes to justify that commercial. Hopefully things will progress in the area sufficiently that by the end of our project about twenty-twenty-six, we can get that commercial development built. We would love to be able to develop the commercial the very first thing because that's a valuable piece of property and we don't want to delay its development. We would like to see it come on sooner than later, but the rooftops are the necessary element to that development.
Commissioner Sokowski?
Thank you. Um, I think, uh, after looking at the, the initial plan that was brought to us at the very beginning, we had a lot of major concerns about what that area would turn out to be. And a lot of those I know, um, from that meeting came from me, uh, because I live in the Sycamores that's adjacent to this property. And, uh, I know, I know what a lot of the errors that were made cost that subdivision because I lived there. And I appreciate very much that a lot of the, uh, things that were brought up in that meeting were addressed in this plan. I think that the use of space that, that they have changed to honestly is much more appealing. Uh, one of the things that I, I like about this plan is that they've integrated the town homes in and among a lot of the single family homes. One of the problems in the Sycamore's development, uh, is that where they put the town homes just in one big clump on one side of the subdivision and then they put all of the houses elsewhere, it kind of makes the, the town homes feel like they cast away of the subdivision. And, and this plan, uh, definitely integrates the town homes in and amongst the single family homes. And I feel that that's a very valuable thing. Um, I feel like the plan that they've presented is a beautiful plan. And I know that a, a lot of this can change, but, um, I feel like Homes Homes really tried to, to address a lot of our concerns and, uh, being the immediate resident of this, I, you know, next to this, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I like the plan. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Gray?
I'm, I'm going to tell you that, that, that I think they've made great strides, but I, I still don't think this is a planned community.
Can I ask you where it's efficient?
Well, I don't, let me, let me tell you, based on the, the intent of a planned community, um, it, it, it doesn't, I don't think it, uh, encourages imaginative concepts in the design of the neighborhood housing, uh, which is in the intent in C two. I don't think it creates a vis, a distinctive visual character. I think this is just another Homes Homes, um, housing development, uh, with standard houses that they're going to modify so that they can meet the ordinance. I don't think it meets the requirement that it provides for open land for the general benefit of the community and the public at large for recreation and social activity. It marginally meets the requirements for a comprehensive pedestrian circulation network. To be honest with you, when you look at the commercial section, instead of integrating the commercial section into, uh, the development, they put a buffer instead of separate it off. You know, that, that, the opportunities there to create some very nice open space to say, hey, we can, we can put some business around, we have a meet, we can have a, some sort of courtyard, something, you know, a couple acres that people could meet, do stuff, and it's a one, it's a two acre strip park, it's a piece of grass that separates homes from commercial with the, and, and it, it isolates the commercial, doesn't integrate the commercial and hence it, it kind of destroys the planned community. Uh, the other things that bother me about the project is that we completely eliminated the twenty thousand foot square foot lots. There were eleven of them there and we've taken them all out. And it's ironic that the place where we put, that where we put the church is the one where we had the lowest density instead of taking out the higher density houses. I get that developers need to make money. I get developers need to make, you know, have a profit margin, but it's, it's, it, that, to me, that's ironic that in, in some ways that's, it's, we take out, we take out the eleven biggest lots in the neighborhood, uh, to shift some around and, and then we take out a bunch more because that's, that's where we, we're going to dedicate the church land instead of a, you know, a place where we could eliminate a few small houses. So, um, I, I, overall, I don't think it, I don't see this as a planned community. I, I, I just, I just don't. You know, planned communities, you know, Daybreak's a planned community. This, 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 this is a bunch of houses thrown in there with, you know, with a couple of parks and with the, with the commercial being an afterthought and, and it doesn't, to me, it doesn't meet the intent of a, a planned community. So that's why I am opposed to this.
Commissioner Sokowski?
Thank you. Um, and see, I disagree with you in that because I see, ye- yes, they lowered the lot size in phase fifteen a little bit or in, in thirteen, however, they're still, they still fall into the lower density. There's still a lot. I, I love that it's not just a boxy community. As far as connectivity, I think it's great. I don't see cul-de-sacs in there except for one. Um, so it is fairly well-connected. And being that it's on the outer boundary of West Jordan, they really don't have a whole lot of opportunity to connect to anything else. I mean, they have the future connectivity in fourteen, ten, uh, to the lot subdivisions that would be to the north. Yes, the commercial is, is down on the corner there. However, I still feel like since it's on the, the boundary of West Jordan, everyone that lives in this community would have to come past sixteen every day. So that provides access for anyone that lives in that community. I feel like the trail system that's in our packet that wraps all the way around, uh, this community and through it would provide beneficial access to not only the residents here, but the residents that are in the Sycamores that currently run along those trails. It would open a lot to us. I, I disagree. I think, you know, and, and where you, your argument of this is just another Homes Homes community that's being dropped in with houses, I mean, you could probably stick that on any builder. Uh, that's what they do. However.
But if it's a planned community, then it ought to be more planned than just, and, and in all reality, this is the same plan we've seen three or four times with just minor modifications. But, you know, I, you know, I'll see it a different way.
But I don't, I don't see how this differs largely from, uh, something like Daybreak like you brought up. Where this is a PC zone, all of these items are going to be coming before the design review committee and the planning commission again for approval. So, uh, they have a concept plan here for us. What we're looking at mainly tonight is the density and, and how that close the plat will be discussed again later.
The concept plan goes lock, stock and barrel with the, with the zoning change. So the, the concept plan is going to be the guide for the future and they're not going to be able to modify it much.
I like the concept plan.
And if we hold them to, I mean, if we don't hold them to the concept plan, then, and we keep modifying it, we're going to end up with the same mess that we ended up with over at Bangator, uh, you know, at the Bangator T S O D because we're, we got people wanting to make modifications. So the concept plan is part of the zoning reapproval and I think it's got to, I think there's got to be, uh, some accountability with, uh, you know, yes, we do, the, the density is set based on the concept plan and that's, I mean, that's part, part and parcel of this is that the density, the concept plan, they all go hand in hand.
So let me ask you, what would you change in the concept plan to make it more Daybreak?
Have no idea, but it, right, right now, without going through it, I have no idea. Just the, you know, the isolation, the commercial area from the housing area.
The Daybreak is isolated as well. You have Soder Row, but that's all in one spot, right in the middle and houses all around it.
And it's in the middle. And they have, they have the other, they have the open area where they need.
But see, I would argue.
Let's, let's keep it one at a time so we can keep this straight.
I would argue though, that this commercial area provides connectivity for the Sycamores as well. If you move the commercial off of seventy-eight hundred south and you put it right in the middle of this development, then that isolates it from the community at large.
I don't think you, I don't think you move the commercial area off the corner. I think you need to have it integrated better into the, for, for both these people and the other people so that you can have, for lack of a better term, you know, community gathering, anything like that. This doesn't do it. Uh, that's my point is that, you know, you go to Daybreak over by Soder Row and across the street, they've got some places where the community gathers. They have outdoor concerts. They have those, those kind of things. And the two acre strip piece of property right there is not going to be that kind of, that kind of thing. So there, there's, you know, that, but, you know, we're all entitled to where we go with this and that's why you're setting us up here.
Just a point of clarification on that two acre strip of property. The reason, I assume you're, Commissioner Green, you're talking about this area? The reason why that's kind of devoid of any amenities or connection is the grade drops significantly right there. And, and so this is phase sixteen, it kind of sits down in a, a little hole. And it, it really has a physical disconnect between the commercial and phases seven and six up to the north. So just wanted to point that out.
Just a quick comment about, so the idea for us is we're actually bringing Daybreak product over here. So in terms of the mixed use of stuff, we've got the alleyways that'll have a front load garage, so you'll live to the front and to the side of the house. So it's a different and traditional thing that you actually don't have a whole lot in West Jordan. And then we'll have our town homes, then we'll have our cottage courts, then we'll have our traditional single family that you, that you normally see with the garages up front. And so the idea is, is that we do want to integrate it a little bit differently, Commissioner Green, than, than any other area that we build in because we want to have multiple product lineups so we're not competing with ourselves. So we want to have the front load garage. We want to have the alley loaded garage like you see in Daybreak. And then the commercial pieces are very similar to several areas that we build in Daybreak right now. I have the same town homes across an area that's going to be future, the future development in Daybreak and it all integrates right into that front corridor. And so I, Homes Homes' intention is to build a great neighborhood, uh, lasting a long time with different looks and feels so that we hit a little bit of what Commissioner Green is talking about. It's not just your normal box row homes. It's got the variety of what, uh, uh, we want to do and what we want to propose. There's about six or seven different product lineups that we would do that show a totally different variation. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, that trying to get as very similar as we can to some successful products that we've done. Even in your product that we did in Terrace Hills, we have three different product lineups just in town homes. Uh, one's a front load, one's an alley load, one's a, a, a lower level, just to have diversity, uh, so people aren't looking at the same stuff. So that's our goal and intent here.
Did you give us your name?
Sorry, I'm Jason Nagley with Homes Homes. Sorry.
Commissioner Green?
Oh, it's my turn to jump in a little bit here. I think, uh, I want to jump in and echo the sentiment expressed. You guys did a great job addressing our concerns. I think we gave you a lot of, a, a lot of ideas and maybe some confusing ones. You guys have done a good job digesting that and, and giving us a new concept. I, I think that this idea of the planned community that we're kind of discussing, my feeling on this is that most of these are kind of in the eye of the commissioner at this point. And I side with Commissioner Sokowski. I think that we're meeting the, the intent of, of most of these points. I, I think this is a great plan. I think that, just to address one of the issues Commissioner Green about, the twenty thousand square foot lots, I think they would be out of place at this point with everything else that we've done. As we've seen this from the beginning until now, we've massaged, we moved the, we removed the, the mixed use, uh, component. We've, uh, we've, we've had, you guys have made changes. I think that the twenty thousand square foot lots at this point would be out of place. I think this is a great concept and I believe in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harder?
Thank you. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Sokowski too. I wasn't at the last meeting and wasn't privy to, uh, the other plans and that, but I, I see here that, uh, there's a good mix of proper, of, of housing in there. I do like the commercial on the corner. It, it, it's really the highest and best use for that property, uh, that corner piece there. I, I, the only question I have, not on the concept plan, uh, is in the CCNRs. And the, I was wondering if there was a provision in there for a transfer fee.
I have no idea, but if we need one, we can.
No, no, no. The reason I, the reason I ask is because, uh, out in Daybreak, when, uh, being a practicing realtor in Daybreak, when, when you sell a property out there, resell after their, after the resale, you have, in certain parts of Daybreak, you have three different transfer fees. Those raise the cost of selling, selling, um, the houses, condos or whatever. So my, my thoughts are if there's a way to keep those out of the CCNRs, please do because it just adds an, an additional burden onto the home buyers. So that's just my.
Very good.
Two cents there.
And, and we can have the attorneys work on that, so.
Please do. I think it's, uh, it, it doesn't, it, it helps the future buyers, sellers. Uh, there are costs that are incurred there that they could, that can be saved.
Thank you.
Just in our other communities, we don't have a transfer fee, so we would probably do the same thing. The only area that's forced is Daybreak. And that's because of the development. So every other development we do doesn't have the transfer fees.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
There's no further discussion. I'm up for a motion. Please.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map for a hundred and thirty-eight point five acres from low den, low density residential, high density residential, mixed use and commercial to low density residential, medium density residential and commercial designation on property generally located at the northwest corner of seventy-eight hundred south and U one eleven.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sokowski, second by Commissioner Queen. Discussion to that motion. Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries six to one.
And based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone approximately one hundred and thirty-eight point five acres of property generally located seventy-eight hundred south and U one eleven from mixed use, uh, high density, multi-family residential, low density, single family residential. use, high density resident, multifamily residential, low density, single family residential and community shopping center to a PC planned community zoning district.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Which concludes our agenda for this evening unless there's anything else you would like to discuss.
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Skoski to adjourn. Any opposed to that? We stand adjourned until, are we meeting the day after the day? September sixth, two thousand and sixteen.